In this church. Well, love is the number one rule. We like to love everybody and like to be a great part of our community. We're here to get some information concerning Edgemont and what happens if Edgemont separate from the unincorporated part of Greenberg. And we have different speakers that's going to give you information. Now, we want it to be clear, but we're not making a statement that Greenberg against Edgemont separating coalition is not stating, we are not saying that they do not have the right. The point we want to make is that what effect it has and everyone that the effect has a part on should have the right to vote in this kind of problem with this kind of situation. So we have some great speakers and some great information. I want to kind of set an order, but the speakers will be called upon to give us their information. And after each speaker have given information, we want you to come and if you have questions, there's a mic to my left and a mic to my right. You can go there and please do that so that the people on Zoom can see who was at the mic and everybody's in good communication. I was informed that we have almost 50 people already on Zoom. So, so there's a lot of people tuning in and we want everybody to have ample time. So I think each speaker is going to be given a time limit. Mr. McAlvey is going to, going to go through that. But I want to make sure that everybody is aware of the rules. Please give us your undivided attention. I'm really excited about trying to save Greenberg. I fell in love with Greenberg after moving here 27 years ago as the pastor of this church. And I've, my love has grown tremendously to the point that I'm trying to figure out a way on a pastor's retirement salary, how I can stay in Greenberg. It don't look like it's going to fit, but I'm trying to work it out where I can stay in Greenberg after retirement because I love this place and I love the people here. I've made so many great friends and I want to, if at all possible, I want to spend the rest of my days in Greenberg. And I think with Edgemont still connected to unincorporated Greenberg might help that. So I'm going to introduce Hal McAlvey and McAlvey, and he's going to come and he's going to be the moderator for the speakers that will come before you. And please give him your undivided attention as he comes.
Good evening, everyone in the sanctuary and everyone watching on Zoom. We've, our moderators, our speakers tonight have agreed to a certain amount of minutes because we want to get out on time, right? And so we don't want people rambling on and keeping us here till midnight. So if you hear a little ding in the background, that's what it is. Okay? And if you see me waving my hands, they didn't hear the second ding. Okay? So again, thank you everyone for watching on Zoom. Thank you for everyone being in the sanctuary. And as Bishop Preston said, if you have questions, we may ask you to hold those questions to the end if someone else is going to discuss those. If not, we'll try and address your questions as we go through. So our first speakers tonight are two great gentlemen from the community. And I'd like to introduce Lloyd Court and Lloyd Newland.
We missing Lloyd?
Yeah, no, Lloyd is at the back. Ladies, gentlemen, Bishop Preston and members of my group, Saving Greenberg. I, I'm here basically, as was expressed before, just to let you know what's at stake if Edgemont decides to secede from us. First of all, I must let you know that my family and I have lived here in Greenberg for over 50 years. And my children attended Central School here in Greenberg. And now adults celebrate the diversity that nurtured and continue to guide them today. Indeed, diversity is the matter of the town. We represent different races, culture, religions, and social economic background. But we all manage to respect and celebrate our uniqueness. This is especially remarkable and diverse consumed nation that economic, racial, political, religious, and ethnic, to name a few, that cause us to be what we are. Regrettably, you know, New York State Village Law Section 2-116, enacted over 100 years ago, is being used to divide Greenberg. Edgemont is currently poised to secede from unincorporated Greenberg to become incorporated as a village. Should Edgemont succeed, they will be creating a village that is increasingly diversified, to which the town has known. They will simultaneously be decreasing the diversity in sections of town that remains on, that is presently unincorporated. It is hard to, to me, to understand that after moving into a diverse community such as ours, there would be a group of people trying to segregate themselves from unincorporated Greenberg. At this stage of the process, it is our hope that they can deepen and depend on New York State Representative Senator Andrew Stewart-Cousins and Assembly Member Mary Jane Sinchki, who always thought of those who are less fortunate to intervene, to press and uniquely address things that concerns unincorporated Greenberg. And not only unincorporated Greenberg, but also incorporated Greenberg. Our legislative, legislative relief can only ensure that secession cannot, secession cannot occur. I will say in conclusion, because I heard the bell, I would be remiss if I did not stress the devastating, social, economic, and compromised quality of life that residents of, and businesses will suffer. Funding our school to educate our children who are our future would be gravely impacted. We will have an increase in our taxes and reduced services. They finally, what else will happen? Potential layoff of friends, relatives, and loved ones. This is like taking the last piece of food from the weak, hungry, and starving person. If Edgemont incorporates, Greenberg will cease to be the town of choice for those who seeking to purchase homes here in Greenberg and also to raise their family as they normally do. Thanks. Lloyd Newland.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you all for coming out tonight. We appreciate it. And for those of you at home who's watching this via Zoom, we'd like to welcome each and every one of you. We asked you all to come here tonight so we can, as a community, discuss a very, very important thing that's going to affect the quality of life of all of us here in Greenberg. And, and that is Edgemont wants to form its own little village, so they want to secede from the town. And this is going to have a devastating impact. And while they have a right to do so, and everyone has a right to do that also. However, there is an old antiquated law over 100 years ago or more, probably since the Jim Crow era up in Albany, that allow segment of a town to break away and form their own little village and from the rest of the, the, the main population in Greenberg. And so I have a statement here that I'd like to read. My wife and I have lived in Greenberg for more than 47 years, raised our children here and have been active in the community which we love. It has been my honor to serve on the Greenberg School Board and work with my neighbors for the betterment of our community with many neighborhood association and community groups over several years. I was on this Greenberg Central School District, the Board of Education for about 20 years, which I was the board president. I got off 2018. Throughout these years, there has been one common theme. Greenberg is a town with wonderful people of many races, religion, culture, and beliefs. It, it's, it's beauty lie in the manner in which we relate to each other and the absolute respect we demonstrate for differences. Although as an African-American man, I relate deeply to voters suppression. I believe the issue being discussed at the forum tonight are not solely racial. Greenberg is a town comprised of people of all races, religion, and culture. We are proud of the social involvement of our senior population and elected by young people who have chosen to raise their family in the community and bring them with a wealth of knowledge and enthusiasm. However, current New York State law does not allow us the right to participate in deciding our future, and that is just wrong. Equal access to voting is a right. Tenant of Americans democracy, and there must be equal voting rights under the law. There is a great deal at stake for us in this community. Decreased services, increased property taxes, layoff of town staff, many of who are our neighbors, and overall decline in strength and the viability of the unincorporated town of Greenberg. Edgemont's proposed incorporation posed this threat. And we, the vast majority, more than 80% of the population who will continue to live in an unincorporated town, do not have the right to vote in this democratic process. And worse, our plight is not even considered. The Greenberg I know and love is a community which looks out for one another and whose compassion, resident, and respect, and care for their neighbors. Edgemont in the incorporated area is an afterfront to these valuables which so many of us hold dear. And in conclusion, I ask at this time that our New York State Senator Andrew Stewart-Cousins and our New York State Assemblywoman Mary Jane Shimskey immediately sponsored legislation to amend the current laws so that every resident of the unincorporated town of Greenberg is provided the same right to vote. I believe the viability and the soul of our community are both at stake. And I thank you. I also, I was asked to, we have some dignitaries in our community today that, that are here. And have you already met Bishop Preston? Would you stand up Bishop Preston again so we can acknowledge you? Bishop Preston is the pastor of Christ Temples Church and her host this evening. He was nice enough to let us use his church so we can bring the community together. Oh yeah, Reverend Dr. Leroy Richard, pastor of First Community Church of Nazarene is also on the dais. Please give me that one. Our Westchester County Legislature wasn't able to make it today, but she had some stuff came up and was not able to be here. Our former New York State Assemblyman Thomas Abernathy is here? No, he, he, he was, told us he would be here, but I guess he'll be coming soon. And we have Susan Tochin, Special Assistant to the State Senator Andrew Stewart-Cousins. Susan? Oh, okay. And those of you who remember Susan, I do well. She goes way back since Tony Veteran here. I knew Susan Ben, lovely lady. Welcome. Our, our Greenberg Town Supervisor Paul Finer. Janice Griffin, President of NAACP White Plains Greenberg Branch. She here? Oh, okay. All right. And last, but not least, Greenberg School District Leader, President Tracy Merrick. Dan of Tracy, sorry, can see you. Okay. And we also trustee David Warner. David, very good. Okay. And we have Assemblywoman Mary Jane Shimski. She, she here? Okay. So anyway, that will conclude what I have to say, but I just wanted to say that we have to stick together as a community and we want you to lobby our elected official and make sure that the whole town of Greenberg hasn't stayed this. And thank you all.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Carol Allen. I'm a Hartsdale resident for the past 28 years, and I am the unofficial head of the Saving Greenberg Coalition. Thank you all for coming, both those here in the sanctuary and all of you who are online tonight. Thank you for joining us. In order to appreciate the extent of the problem that we are facing, we must first understand what is Greenberg. Some people refer to Greenberg as the area north of Route 119, but it is much more than that. Westchester is divided into towns, villages, and cities, and Greenberg is one of those towns. But Greenberg actually has seven parts. Greenberg extends from Yonkers north to Mount Pleasant and from the Hudson River east to White Plains and Scarsdale. A village is a part of a town that's formed by a legal process called incorporation. Greenberg consists of six villages and the remainder of the area which is called unincorporated. Our villages were formed between 1873 and 1910, when Westchester was largely farmland and people needed services such as police, fire, and sanitation. The law describing the villages, how villages are formed and how they are to be run, was written by the state legislature in 1897. Four of our six villages are the river towns of Dobbs Ferry, Hastings, Irvington, and Tarrytown, which lie along the Hudson River. Number five is Ardsley, which sits adjacent to Dobbs Ferry. Number six is Elmsford, which sits smack in the middle of the unincorporated area. Each village has their own government, their own police, fire, sanitation, recreation, and schools. They raise their own taxes and they pay a tiny amount to the overall town for administrative services. The population of the entire town is roughly 95,000 people, of which about half reside in those six villages. That leaves about 45,000 that live in the unincorporated town. There are only about 7,000 residents that live in the Edgemont section, which is that small area nestled between Ardsley and Scarsdale. In fact, Edgemont shares a post office with part of Scarsdale and their addresses are Scarsdale addresses. But why am I going to all this detail? Because I want to make sure that you know that everyone in the entire town gets to vote to elect our supervisor and our council members, but those officials, in fact, only govern over half of the town. So our village neighbors already have tremendous input into determining who governs us. Needless to say, our needs are not the primary concerns of the villagers. Should Edgemont become the seventh village, the government of our unincorporated town will effectively be chosen by the 60% of the population who reside in the villages, not by those of us who live in unincorporated area. As the law regarding the formation of villages is currently written, only the people who live in Edgemont can vote on whether or not to form a new village. The remaining 40,000 of us who are not in Edgemont section are not eligible to vote in that referendum. We have no say in a process that would give the villagers the majority voice in electing our town government, thus controlling the decisions that affect our town and our lives. We have no say in a process that could result in the loss of $17 million in taxes. That loss would devastate our town budget and the services that the town provides to us. We want you to know what would happen to our town if Edgemont forms a new village. We want you to know why we believe that the law must be changed so that everyone who would be affected by a new village incorporation must have a vote on the matter. We want you to realize that as the law is currently written, a small elitist segment of the town has the ability to destroy the budget and the way of life of the larger part of the town. Our coalition believes that no one should have the legal right to destroy a government entity that bears responsibility for the well-being of its population. So we have, I believe, six speakers this evening, each of whom has been asked to speak for no more than three minutes so that they won't be long-winded and we won't bore you. That would leave us adequate time for any questions and we'll be able to answer them for you later. If you're attending by Zoom and you have a question, please drop it into the chat box and we will address it. Thank you. I would like to ask Mr. Abernathy, our former New York State Assemblyman, if he's ready to speak.
I want to thank all of you for coming this evening and give me an opportunity to address the issue. As a Greenberg Town Councilman many years ago, and then a county legislator and an assemblyman, I represented this fine community for a, a, a quite a period of time. But more importantly, I got to understand the community. And I got to understand the people of Greenberg. And I got to understand the strength of Greenberg. And the strength was that we had a diverse community that worked together to build an even better community. And I remember when I was on the town board, we would look at different parts of the town and say, what goes best here? And if the town were different, then we would have put those services in different places. But we looked at the community as a whole and we said, we need certain services. Where would it best fit? It would best fit over here. And now how some other services and other types of, of, of community benefits? And we would balance the community. So we built a better community by working together and putting those services that we needed in various parts of the town. So I start with, with the concept that the village law, as it exists in Albany today, in the state today, is anachronistic. It's anachronistic because it doesn't make sense to allow a small part of the community which has all of the services that it needs to break away for the political convenience of that small part of the community. It may still make sense where you have a rural area and people want to form a, a village to provide better services, but we already have the services. It doesn't make any sense. So it's time for this to change. If you remember, the former governor talked about sharing services, trying to consolidate political districts. That didn't go real far because people don't want to give up their independence. But those who have tried to break away have found failure. We've seen it out on Long Island. We've seen it in other places. So it does make sense to at least not break up what's already working. And we shouldn't allow for a, a, an additional government where it's only for political convenience and doesn't serve the whole community. Secondly, I think this town is stronger when it's all together. But it's also not a benefit to just this community. I will tell you, I no longer live in the town of Greenberg. But I live next door. I'm now the Democratic Chair of the Town of Mount Pleasant. And I look to Greenberg as a support for the Town of Mount Pleasant. If there's a problem in the middle of the night, who's got a police department big enough to respond? Very few communities in Westchester County, but Greenberg is there. We can count on Greenberg coming out to help. If we were to divide up Greenberg more, we weaken Greenberg services. I saw services in other communities during the storm and I saw Greenberg's services. Greenberg cleaned the streets, cut down the trees, had everything working again in a very short period of time, while other communities that were smaller because of a smaller population could not respond and deal with the problem. So the loss of, of money, the loss of a united front affects not just Greenberg, but affects the entire county of Westchester. Lastly, the process. In this day and age when we're concerned about people being able to vote on those issues that affect them, and to use professional judgment, not just the whim of whoever, we should be looking at the process. And I want to suggest that many of the pieces of legislation that were introduced in both houses of the legislature over the last few years dealt with those issues. One, allowing everybody to vote. Two, having an approval by the controller. He can, he now has to approve different districts, tax districts, whatever. Why not approve a new village if one is being proposed? What about the town board and elected officials? Should they not have the opportunity to hold a hearing and get the facts out to the public so that everyone has the same facts? And then let everyone vote if there's a serious effort to try to break away? So I think there's a lot of things to consider. And I think this is a, a great outpouring to say to Albany, we need to take a serious look at the way the village law is designed. This is a suburban town. It's different from the other towns. It's got a different type of government. Perhaps we should treat suburban towns different than we treat other towns. Thanks for letting me join you tonight. Keep on fighting. Let's keep Greenberg together.
I have the distinct pleasure and honor of introducing our state Senator Andrea Stewart-Cousins, who has made time in her busy schedule to come be with us tonight.
Thank you so much, Dr. Allen, and it's just good to be here. I came down from Albany just because we are still trying to figure out the budget, but I had the I had the opportunity to do this, and I thought it would be a good idea because I just want you to know that I care about Greenberg. I, you know, don't live in Greenberg, but I've had the privilege of representing Greenberg from the time I've been in the Senate. And I've had the opportunity to work with so many of you. And you've worked, you know, with me, starting with my friend Bishop. I know I'm the school board, I know I'm going to get into trouble, I'm looking over here. But we're in his house, you know, in God's house, but I mean, this, you know, I gotta, I gotta give you the credit. And we, we've been fighting together, side by side with so many, so many of you and the school board and so on. You know, I want to say that I think some of my biggest challenges have been posed by Greenberg from the time that I showed up. So you all made me work from day one to save Dobbs Ferry Hospital. I remember it was like, you gotta save that hospital, like before I even got in there. And with your help, grace of God, and all the, you know, the desire and the need of the community, I was successful, along with my good friend, the late Lois Bronze. We were able to save Dobbs Ferry Hospital. And then I remember when Supervisor Finer, the next best thing, you gotta do the, you know, the tennis bubble, this will be the biggest thing ever. And so we did that too. And then it was the school board and the, the aid that the schools get. And trying to get the schools to get the kind of aid, and I see your superintendent here, Superintendent Iverson, and making sure that Greenberg got the amount of money that it should get from the state. And again, I am very proud that certainly over the past three years, due largely to the efforts in my houses, well as the Assembly, we were able to have, again, record amount of school. For the first time, we have been able to fulfill the foundation aid for schools across the state. And largely driven by what's happened, not only here, but, but in other places that were left behind in so many ways. That being said, when the supervisor came to Legislature Abananti and myself, the conversation was around, we think that the school, that Greenberg is linked with Edgemont. And the wealth of Edgemont is what is skewing what Greenberg is getting in terms of school aid. So could you please do legislation that will decouple so that the school will get what it needed? Well, we did do that legislation only to find out when the tax department looked at it, that Greenberg was not only being influenced by Edgemont, but it was every single part of Greenberg. So the town board and the supervisor decided that what the best thing would be to do would be to have revaluation. And the revaluation, he believed, and the board believed, would then give money to the school district because it was no longer linked with some of the more affluent areas. What happened, as we know, and was what happens with most reevaluation, a third of the people get to pay more taxes, a third of the people pretty much stay the same, and a third of the people get reduced taxes. And part of the problem with that is that a lot of times the ones that are hit with the most taxes are, are seniors because they've been in their places a long time, the value has gone up. And so usually it is a nightmare, a political nightmare, for people to take that on. But to the credit of the school, to the town, they took it on. The news, however, was not that great. And part of what happened is that among the areas whose taxes really went up, Edgemont's taxes really went up, about forty some odd percent. Uh, Irvington's went up, a lot of these places went up. But the most significant part of this story is that the school aid for Greenberg didn't go up. The reason why it turned out because so many of the children of Greenberg don't go to Greenberg Public Schools. They go to Stepanett. They go to Maria Regina. They went to what was formerly called the Solomon Schechter. They're all over. And so the, all of that revaluation did not drive more money to the school district. Why am I telling you this? Because its context is important, history is important. And your struggle is important. And I just want you to know, you know, the, the story from whence, you know, I got involved in it. So the supervisor and the board then came back to us and asked us to figure out a way to kind of even off the tax payments so that people who were hit with high taxes suddenly wouldn't be crushed under the pressure. Again, went back, we did that. I'm also telling you this so that you understand there's a history of call and response. And a history of thinking that things would work, and sometimes, you know, they do, sometimes they don't. I believe, and this is just my belief, that there are a lot of reasons that Edgemont got edgy. But I do believe that when those taxes went up, they started giving this some thought about like, okay, I used to get some kind of a benefit, but maybe now we should start trying to figure out how, since we're going to pay this amount of money, all of the political undertones of why they feel they need to be separated or whatever. So they began the process that exists in law since eighteen seventy-four, that has been outlined, that you gotta do this, you gotta do that, you gotta do this, you gotta do that. And they began that process. In the intervening time, you know, there was like, what can you do to stop them from doing this? And quite honestly, there wasn't anything to do to stop them from doing this because they're following the law. Now, obviously, there's things that can happen here, which has happened. Supervisor and the board have tried to, you know, they questioned petitions, this and then all these things. While that was happening, I want you to know that I've worked with many people up here trying to figure out a way forward, including bringing a mediator in. Because I really believe that somewhere in between, whatever the disconnect was, if we had somebody who would sit down and try and bring the sides together, we could get to a place where despite what the law says they can do, we could get to a place that brings people together so that, you know, this great town remains intact. So I brought in the mediator. Didn't work. They've been challenged. They've got their petitions thrown out. In between that, other places have had the same sort of thing, for whatever the reason. Up in Rockland is a village that wants to become a village. And there's, there's a, a place that wants to become independent and, and they don't want them to do that either. And on Long Island, there's some, they don't want that to do that either. And everybody has a different reason for why they think they should incorporate individually. And every legislator would look at how they could help their group and say, okay, let's do this. Oh, they have a thousand people. Why don't we say they should have two thousand people? Let's do that. But for other places, there was another issue. Maybe it was land use. There was all kinds of reasons why people felt that they should separate. And each of us legislators trying to figure out the thing that would work for our place to keep that separation from happening. Now, I'm the leader of the Senate. When we do legislation, it is a statewide thing, unless, as your supervisor came at the end of the last year and asked myself and Assembly, former Assemblyperson Abananti to, in order to generate revenue, to change the way condos are taxed, which we did, in order to help the, the revenue stream that he said that would be helpful to, the only place in the state, right here, because that's what the, the supervisor and the board wanted. That being said, when we do something like this, it can't just be one thing for one group. And it can't be based on what I think will stop something from happening in a particular place. As a woman, as an African-American woman, I've had the rules changed a lot of times when I show up. But I respect the reality of the rules. And I try and be fair. I also think that the reason why I've been successful is because I've been honest and I've tried to be fair. And so, of course, Edgemont was coming and it's like, don't do anything, don't do anything. And Greenberg is coming and saying, you know, do something, do something. And what I want to do is the right thing. And I didn't want to do it just for one because it's a statewide issue. This is an eighteen seventy-four law. A lot of things have changed in a lot of places. What is that thing? And the mediator didn't work. So what did I do? I went to Pace University. We all know Pace. They have a great law school, have a great land use center. And I asked them to do a study that would help to figure out what is the smart way for us to proceed as a legislature to correct this eighteen seventy-four law. And I'm happy to say that we got that back. And I told the, the, say, Greenberg Coalition, when they came to see me, that I was doing this and I got this back a couple of weeks ago, a fifty-page report. It has very valuable guidance as to what we can do the, in order to make this a contemporary law that looks at everything from population, from, from letting some, now there's around the country. And they did an amazing job looking at different states around the country to see how they do this thing. And it turns out the way we do it is just like minimalist. Just, you know, go get signatures and go do it. And then there's a medium section where there is, as the Assemblyman, the former Assemblyman said, where there's a structure in place that, that oversees the incorporation request. There is, that structure also helps to fund a fiscal analysis so that people understand the impacts. There are a lot of things that other states do. We have a new Assemblywoman, Assemblywoman, Assemblywoman Mary Jane Shimskey. You have a new county legislator, Dave in Memora. And what is different is that there is a new Assemblyperson for Edgemont alone. That is different from the way it had been, and that is Amy Paulin. As you know, every ten years, we do redistricting based on the census and the population. What has happened up until this year is that Greenberg had been represented by the same person. So that the Assemblyperson and the Senator who represented in the past ten years, represented Edgemont, also represented Greenberg. And now that is not the case. Assemblywoman Shimskey represents Greenberg, Assemblywoman Paulin represents Edgemont. In order for anything to get passed, both houses have to agree. Both houses has a local, have a local government chair. For legislative changes to go through, that chair has to, you know, put them through in both houses. Because I have a legitimate basis based on a neutral entity, I believe I can work with the Assembly to try and get legislative changes through to the law because we have an objective opinion on how to work and make this reasonable across the state. In the, in the budget, I'm also working, again, we haven't finished the budget, so I can't say, but I'm working to put money in so that, again, there can be some sort of objective fiscal analysis that will be helpful as this process goes. I can't tell you that Edgemont is going to stop what they're doing. I can't tell you that Greenberg, you know, is, is in the position to change everything now. But I can tell you that there are new voices at the table. And again, I have a basis from which to push real change. I will work with you. Greenberg is near and dear to my heart. I will do what I can to make it make sense. But I think it's important that you all, as you continue to mobilize and inform. Like I said, I think the best thing to do is at least if we know what it is we're facing, I'm, you know, we'll work with, with our colleagues to, to try and get this fiscal analysis done. I guess it'll take a number of years or whatever it is before any of this stuff actually happens. And in the intervening time, to the extent that we can all speak to colleagues across the state about the importance, you know, because they influence their legislators as well. So I mean, you know, this is, this is a conversation that's worthy of being had across the state. So as you continue to exert pressure, we'll exert pressure on legislators all over the state to help pass. As I said, in the, in the Senate, you know, I, I, like you said, I control the Senate to the extent, I mean, I don't, they don't do everything I tell them. But if it makes sense, you know, we do it. But I don't control the Assembly. And, and, you know, that's where, you know, a lot of conversation has to happen in order to support Mary Jane. But again, I believe we have a reasonable path forward to make change. And so, again, I wanted to come to tell you that you're not wrong, you're right. You have to fight for the continued strength of this great town. I said, I'm fighting with you, but I have to fight in a way that, you know, is, is true to the integrity of the work that I tried to do on your behalf. And I promise to continue to do that. So, so thank you. Thank you, Carol.
Senator, on behalf of the entire town, the unincorporated and all of our town, I, I really want to thank you for coming down and such an important moment in our history and in the state history. So really thank you. And we're running a little bit behind time, so we're going to hold Assemblywoman Mary Jane Shimskey to the four-minute rule. And, and so I didn't have the nerve to interrupt the Senator, you know, but it's always a pleasure. And Mary James Siski, please.
Now I'm going to have to bring it back down. Thank you so much, Hugh, and thank you so much, Bishop Preston and, and the Christ Temple family. I'm so happy to be here again. I'm glad to be here for a public forum. Is that? Yes, there is County Legislature Jewel Williams Johnson. She is. Just want to make sure you all know she's here. And thank you to everyone for being here, for being. And thank you to everyone for being here, for being concerned about your town, your school district. We have a fantastic panel of people who really understand the issues and understand the town, and it's much appreciated. I don't have the length of time of experience with the specific public policy issues as the Majority Leader has, although she and I have, have been in very close and regular contact on this, which I think is very important because, as she said, there's going to have to be cooperation among both houses of the legislature and throughout the state government as well. We can't go off and freelance and do our own things. We have to work with the best strategy we can based on the circumstances as they present themselves and then move forward together on that strategy. As the Senator alluded, this issue actually has a pretty long history. I've been, since I've only become to the State Assembly this year, I may not be as familiar with a lot of the public policy aspects that have gone on throughout the last couple decades. I have seen, however, a troubling personality conflict which really helped drive this. And it makes me very sad that sometimes when those things happen, they start taking a life of their own, and they put in motion other things that are very difficult to then undo. I am hopeful that cooler heads will begin to prevail and we'll be able to talk a little bit more openly and rationally about some of this. When I arrived at the Assembly in January, this was one of the first issues I started doing my due diligence on, talking to the people who knew the issues. What I had heard was that there were a number of legislative strategies that have been tried, which all failed. And what I heard was a lot of concern that those strategies were, number one, taking away from the fact that there is a larger statewide issue with how we handle these things. And some of what had been attempted actually made it more difficult to get any meaningful general reform done. General reform, which could have potentially, depending on what was decided, helped in a situation like yours. Now, as I've continued to talk about this, there is desire to try to get some general reform done in the Assembly. As the Senator said, she's looking to Pace University to help do the academic research, which would have to undergird anything that we do. So that's moving along as well. The money for the study is still up in the air. That's the specific study. So there's a definitive source that can tell people exactly what the proposed Edgemont incorporation could mean for the town and the school district financially. Hopefully, we will get the money for that. She and I have both been working very hard on this, and hopefully something will happen. That's good on it. Let me go back with the school aid formula issues. This year marked the last year that the school foundation aid to correct inequities in the past under the old formula is going to be complete. We're already starting to have conversations for next year about changes in the school aid formula. And one of the things we're going to have to look at is how to make sure that school districts like Greenberg Central 7, who seem to be in a catch-22 situation, you can't get the funding you need to make the school district more attractive, to get more students in it, because there are not enough students in it. And I'm hopeful that we'll be able to tackle that one as well. Given the past history, the contentiousness, and a lot of the balls that were thrown up in the air that ended up being counterproductive, this is not going to be an easy problem to solve. But there are a lot of people who are interested in meaningful and fair statewide reform. I am very lucky to have the partner I have in working on this, not just because the Senator is one of the three people in the room in Albany, but because she has been making so many moves to try to find the most constructive way to deal with this issue. And I look forward to working with her in a meaningful way on this. And I hope that together we'll really be able to get something good done that will help the town and the school district. Thank you.
Thank you, Assemblywoman. The next presenter, next speaker, the family has a long history of service to the community in Greenberg, and it's a pleasure to introduce Westchester County Legislature Jewel Williams Johnson. Please give her a warm welcome. Legislature, please don't mind, don't mind the bell if it goes.
I'll have no I'll have no trouble with that. I'll be brief. It's hard to follow two overly savvy, intelligent elects above me. I really appreciate the history that Andrea Stewart-Cousins just laid out for us. I think it's very important that we know the background. As you said, yes, my mother, Alfreda, about to say her whole name, Alfreda Williams, has, she remembers, even now, she remembers more than I do. I call her my computer because I forget everything and I have to call her and ask her. But she will, she was going to come tonight, but didn't feel that good. But I, when we talk about this subject, she always talks about, I remember when Anthony Veteran was a town supervisor, and the first time they tried to succeed, and he put his foot down and it went no further. But again, that's why the history is so important. So thank you very much for that. And I'm so proud to have worked with Assemblywoman Mary Jane Shimskey and know how dedicated she is, especially to what is right. And so I'm so glad that the committee invited me to their Monday meetings, and I'll try my best. Mondays are the hardest for me to Board of Legislators, but I will try my best. Dedicated to being there and to helping as much as I can. I'm so glad about the study from Pace. I urge all of you to read what Carol has distributed, particularly the Rockefeller Institute report about incorporations and the history of the state law. And I've spoken to a couple of attorneys that we are inviting to the next meetings, and they already have interest in this. So I think we're working from all angles, and I like to, as you may or may not know, I chair the Board's Health Committee. And I always like to quote Teddy Roosevelt, who was the first to advocate for health care for all. And it goes something like, when you're doing, fighting for what's right is the noblest sport in our nation. And this is what's right. Edgemont succeeding, I get it, but it, why, you know, the impetus and the desire, but it would be devastating for the rest of Greenberg. So I think there, I'm hopeful, and I think there's still a happy medium to come. And I think between all the brain power, we will see it come to fruition. So thank you very, very much.
Thank you, Legislature. And now I'd like to introduce a person that I've listened to and gotten to know for this, the last couple of months, Ms. Janice Griffith, who's the President of NAACP for White Plains and Greenberg.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you so much for coming, taking time out of your busy day, all of you, and sharing your information with us. I'm from the NAACP, and our position is very simple: voting rights. It is not about, even though the outcome of Edgemont leaving Greenberg would be devastating to most of us, it would really hurt many of the people that are members in the NAACP. Most of us are minorities. We are older people on fixed incomes. Knowing that our taxes could, our property taxes could rise is devastating. Most of us want to stay in Greenberg. We really like Greenberg the way it is, and we can't afford our taxes to go up any higher. Even though the impact of Edgemont succeeding would be devastating, the real issue for us is voting rights. Too many of our leaders fought and died for us to have voting rights. And it wasn't to be selective. It was voting rights across the board. If the issue affects us, we should have a say in it. It doesn't necessarily get us the, the response we want or the outcome that we're looking for, but it gives us a voice in the process. And that is what so many of our people died for, so that we can have a voice. And that's why I decided to join this committee, because it is very important to me. I want to stay in Greenberg. I don't want my taxes to go up any higher, but I also want to have a voice in what goes on in this community, like most of the members of the NAACP. So thank you very much for coming out and caring about this very important issue. I really, really appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you again.
The, there would be a major impact to the school should Bonds have had a very hard time passing with the current financial situation. And so, at a request, I would like to introduce the Greenberg. I, I got that. Okay. Who's, you know, I got to know Tracy a few years ago, so it's my pleasure to introduce President of the School Board, Tracy Merritt.
Good evening. I also have to introduce my superintendent who's here, Dr. Linda Iverson. Can you stand up, please? She came out this evening, and I also have my school, another school board trustee with me, trustee David Warner. So I'm here to talk about education and how this affects the schools greatly. Education is so, so very important. You are all here because someone educated you. You care about this issue because you are educated on what matters to your taxes, your tax dollars, but also to the people that live here and the people that use the services here. We educate about 1,700, right, students, and our students need your support. We constantly ask you to support our budgets. We constantly ask you to support our programs. And now we're asking you to support the, the unison of the unincorporated area of Greenberg so that the school district doesn't suffer. How does the school district suffer? Well, the school district's budget is the only budget that the taxpayers get to vote on. So if Edgemont does leave the unincorporated area and they incorporate, and our taxes go even higher, are you going to support our school budget? Are you going to want to pay for the students if you really can't afford to pay for your taxes? I don't know. I don't want to take that risk. And when Dr. Carol Allen and our previous board trustee Lloyd Newland, I don't know where he's sitting, contacted us and spoke to us about it, we got very concerned and we convened a special committee to look at the facts and the details. And we came back and we decided to pass a resolution. I'm going to read the resolution to you. This was passed on February 28th, 2023. Whereas, from time to time, persons residing within the territories of the town of Greenberg circulate petitions to form unincorporated villages within the town. And whereas, Article 2 of the New York State Village Law permits persons residing in such territories containing a population of at least 500 persons who are regular inhabitants of such territory to circulate petitions for village incorporation in a town, when, among other things, such territories do not include a part of a city or villages and do not contain more than five square miles. And whereas, incorporation of a village will impact property taxes within the bounds of the Greenberg Central School District and will place an additional tax burden upon the properties within the school district. And whereas, the Greenberg Central School District Board of Education believes that such tax impact will negatively affect the school district and its finances. And whereas, the Greenberg Central School District Board of Education believes all persons in our school district should be aware of the financial impact and be allowed a voice in any potential village incorporation. And whereas, Section 2-216 of New York State Village Law currently specifies the qualifications of persons permitted to vote on such petitions as residents of the territory to be incorporated. Now therefore be it resolved that the Greenberg Central School District Board of Education requests legislation be modified such that a state comptroller-approved financial impact statement pertaining to both the potential village and the surrounding financially impacted community shall be made available to the public for consideration. And comments at least 40 days prior to a village incorporation vote and qualification of voters on a petition for incorporation shall include those in the entire territory of unincorporated town, which includes all impacted school districts. Be it further resolved that the Board of Education authorizes the Superintendent of Schools to send a letter stating our position on this topic to the New York State Legislators. And we did just that. Dr. Iverson shaking her head because she wrote the letter for us right away, turned it around, I believe, next couple of days. On March 6th, she sent letters to Ms. Andrea Stewart-Cousins, Assemblymen Shimskey and Paulin. On March 8th, our Vice President, trustee Pineda, he presented this resolution as well to the town of Greenberg at their meeting. And on March 17th, Dr. Iverson met with Assemblywoman Mary Jane Shimskey, and she's going to be meeting with Senator Stewart-Cousins in May. And so I, I beg of you, I plead to you to continue to push for this fight. I was very pleased to hear everything that you let us know, Senator Stewart-Cousins, and I have to take this opportunity to thank both Senator Stewart-Cousins and Mr. Avananti for getting us some monies. Mr. Avananti is going to help us to restore our auditorium at the historic RJ Bailey School. So we're very, very thankful. I haven't gotten to look you in the eye and thank you for that. And then Senator Stewart-Cousins came right behind and said, I'm also going to get you some money to build our track, rebuild, rebuild our track, because we have a quite a nice track that's actually giving our students some splints in their legs from running on it because it is not done right. So she's having us, giving us some, getting us some monies to have that done correctly. So I do have to look you guys in the eye and thank you very, very much. We have 1,700 students that are very, very grateful to you, and we continue to need your support. We do have a budget vote on May 16th, but I'm not here to talk about that. So before Dr. Allen kicks me off, I will thank you all, and please, please continue the fight to keep Greenberg united. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. And, you know, I just want to take a moment just to recognize Dr. Iverson, the superintendent, again, who has worked tirelessly since she got here on behalf of all our children across the town. So, Doctor, thank you. And just, she's going to say a few words.
So good evening, everyone. I am Dr. Iverson, the proud superintendent of Greenberg Central School District. I'm in my second year here, and I have to tell you, it's been one of the best experiences I've had. The partners who were in the work who have spoken today, I know them all. And I have to tell you unsolicited that in this work as superintendent is very important that you have these relationships. And I have to tell you, I've been so blessed to have formed these relationships with Senator Stewart-Cousins, Assemblywoman Shimskey, former Assemblyman Abanati. They are available to me whenever I need to talk to them. They come to the district and meet with me. I know from my heart, they have a love for Greenberg. They show it. You know how they say you can put it in your actions? They just don't talk it, they show it. And they have been very committed to the district, and they show that to me all the time. I'm here tonight to say to you, I'm in this fight with you. I now, the history was wonderful. Thank you for that. And we talked about the study because we've had meetings, and I knew that was coming. So I'm glad to hear that's about, that's coming, that's done, because data tells everything, and it's a nice process. So what I'm glad to see is working. But you're, my commitment to you is that in the absence of it, until it does, we're going to continue to make Greenberg Central School District one of the finest districts in the state of New York. This is a great community. We have the finest students, the best students, and we have the finest staff. And I'm going to work with the funds we have to assure that the education they get does not suffer. Yes, if this passes, there will be an impact. Because the vision for Greenberg is to make it a state-of-the-art district, to bring back some of those students who are not in our buildings, because we know we can offer what they're getting everywhere else. Believe me, those private schools are doing nothing more than what we can do. But we need money for that, and we don't want to do that on the backs of your taxes. So we're trying to be very cognizant of how we do the budget. You heard trustee Mayor, our president, whom I were very close with, trustee Warner is here. We meet all the time, and we're very conscious about how we do the budget so we don't impact your taxes to that level. So that's the impact we're constantly concerned about, always in the back of my head. How do we bring the best to our students? How do we increase opportunities for our students and not on the backs of your taxes and increase, you know, the budget in that regard? It's hard for a superintendent to do that. It is hard, but we're trying, and I believe we can get there. So so excited to see that, and I'm here tonight to say that we're, I'm in this partnership with you. I will continue to do my very best to assure your students who come to the school are getting the very best education and provide the best opportunity for them. Please rest assured of that. My heart's here. I'm so happy to be here and look forward to continuing. Thank you.
As we talk about our children and we move forward, I would be remiss if we didn't take one moment. One of the ladies, Noelle Broccoli, who champions all of our summer programs. And she recently lost her husband the other night. He passed away. And, you know, if you've ever seen all the children of the town at day camps throughout the summer. So Noelle, our prayers and our hearts go out to you for your loss. And now I'd like to introduce Michael Schwartz, Mike Schwartz.
Good evening, and thank you all for coming. It's much appreciated. My name is Mike Schwartz. I'm a thirty-one-year resident of Greenberg, living all those thirty-one years within Edgemont. And I'm going to try over three minutes to tell you everything about a budget of ninety-six million dollars for the town and what part of that Edgemont holds and how the loss of that money is going to affect you. So towns kind of work backwards in the way they do their budget. They first establish how much money they're going to spend, and then they go ahead and say, well, how much money do we need? So the way it works now, all of the revenues for the town break into two different areas. One of them is your property taxes, and the other one is revenues. And the revenues are hotel taxes and sales taxes and the fees that you pay and the money that you pay if you renovate your bathroom to the building department. So in Greenberg today, about two-thirds of the money of the revenue comes from your property taxes and a third from fees. Edgemont, which is a very verifiable number based on their total assessed value, has fourteen and a half million dollars worth of property tax revenue. In addition to that, using their own numbers, Edgemont's numbers, they project about three and a half million dollars in revenue. So on day one, the budget of Edgemont of eighteen million dollars will be removed from the ninety-six million dollars of Greenberg's budget. It's only fair to explain that in addition to that, there's two million dollars worth of monies that Edgemont will have to pay the town for bond debt that was accrued prior to any potential incorporation. So the real money that we're looking at, the real loss to the town is sixteen million dollars in ninety-six. And it's between fifteen and twenty percent, seventeen percent is fairly accurate. So what does that mean? Imagine what sixteen million dollars worth of loss would look like. Would it mean fewer policemen? Would it mean fewer EMS drivers? Can you imagine what that would look like? Would it mean fewer days at the library? Would it mean fewer days that the pool is open? Would it mean that programs at the Theodore Young Community Center would be cut? When you look at a budget in a municipal organization, you know that generally two-thirds of all of the funds that are spent have to do with payroll and payroll benefits. So for every million dollars, you're looking at eight or nine employees. So if, even if Edgemont determines that they want to buy some services from Greenberg, which is undetermined, we're looking at four million, five million, eight million, ten million dollars worth of loss. The town can't sustain that. It's not a possibility. Just recently, I received, because I'm an Edgemont resident, an email, a blast that was actually given to me by a neighbor from the committee that's proposing incorporation. And they said, hey, you know what? It's not going to be so bad. This is what they're telling the people of Edgemont, because we're going to buy twelve million dollars worth of services. And therefore, it's only going to be about a four million dollar loss. Well, first of all, if that occurred, and that was the best-case scenario, four million dollars would have to come from parks and the community center because if they bought police and EMS and the building department, I'm sorry, and the DPW, snow plowing and sanitation, there's nothing else left. Where would four million dollars come from? How could anybody, anybody, any department handle that? So that's the reality. What you have to understand in terms of the negotiation for services, which is really important, is the way the law is written, an interesting thing occurs. And this is for me, in Edgemont, a, what do you call it, a large issue. The issue is simply this, that if I decide that I want to vote in the referendum for or against incorporation, I'll have no knowledge of where my service is going to come from, the level of my services, or the cost of my services until three or four months after I vote. Why is that? Because the determination for contracting services is the responsibility of a newly-elected Edgemont Village Board, which would not be elected, which would not hire a village supervisor until months after the decision is made. So we support our state elected officials in their desire to have a study done. However, so let me diverse from, let me diverge from numbers for a second. I'm like a sixties guy. I grew up in the sixties. You know, we looked at the, at all the changes that have been made in this country over all of the years, you know, of my seventy-five-year life. The only changes that have occurred in this country in terms of civil rights and social rights have been done through legislation. Because if you give somebody the opportunity to make a choice on their own, they're going to do what's best for themselves. That's the reality. And there is a cost to incorporation. The cost is going to be higher taxes for residents in the remainder of Greenberg. It's going to be decreased services. It's going to be two brand-new municipal entities, each one less racially and economically diverse than together. So I think it's really important that we have Senator Stewart-Cousins and Assemblymember Shimskey here tonight, because it shows, it reflects that they understand how important this all is. However, while the studies are being done, while the discussions are going on, Edgemont could turn around tomorrow and submit a petition. After failing two times previously, we're expecting that they're going to have a petition which meets all of the guidelines of the state. And while everybody's talking about this, and while our elected officials are working hard for studies, which again are important because an informed voter is better than an uninformed voter, Edgemont could quickly move in and incorporate, and the devastation that we've spoken about will occur. So people have to keep that in mind, and everybody, our elected officials and all of the members of our town have to realize that there is a sense of urgency, and we need to express it and be part of this process. Thank you.
And now I'd like to introduce another fine leader in the community, Pastor Leroy Richards. Pastor?
Ladies and gentlemen, good evening. Want to give honor to our elected officials who are here and all other dignitaries that have already been acknowledged and recognized. We're so glad that you have taken time out to join us this evening. I'm a part of this coalition saving Greenberg. And the very title of the coalition suggests that Greenberg needs saving. And I'm not here to detail some of the financial ramifications or the services that are threatened. You've heard ample statements about that. I'm here to just kind of think about what this means in terms of the right of the people. I believe, and it has been mentioned earlier, that if something affects you, you should have the opportunity to address it personally, rather than be victimized by other people's personal decision and desires. It just seems morally right. Now, as I think about the situation that we are sliding into, I think about the fact that each of us have a smoke detector in our house. And when that smoke detector goes off, it signals that we ought to take action because something serious might be happening. And I think this meeting is kind of like a smoke detector in our community. And I'm so glad that you're here responding. There is another part of this that is concerning me, and that is that Edgemont have a right to go to court and to incorporate. It's their legal right. I acknowledge that. But we know from history that not because you have a right, that means it's right to do it. Not because you can, mean that you should. And here we have a situation where this law from eighteen ninety-seven is governing what we're doing as a community today. But we wouldn't want the fire department of eighteen ninety-seven to be overseeing us today. We wouldn't want the police department of eighteen ninety-seven to taking care of our public safety. The law is outdated, and therefore the law needs to be changed. We're not a rural agricultural community. We're a modern suburban community. We need modern laws to supervise community. And may I just say, community is really, really what this is all about? Because, you know, we're living in the United States, united. And as we move on as a country and as a community, we find that there are forces dividing us, and we ought to fight against those forces. Because part of the beauty of America and part of the beauty of Greenberg is that we can be united within our diversity. There can be a kind of a common brotherhood, sisterhood. And so this cessation business is taking us backward. You know, there was a time when, you know, there was a water fountain for blacks and a water fountain for whites. Those divisions we struggled and fought against and came together. Now, don't divide us and separate. You know, redlining is something we lived with. We don't want to call back echoes of redlining and call it cessation. We struggle with white flight. We don't want to go backward. We want to go forward. And so, ladies and gentlemen, I'm here to say that the issue is a serious issue for the quality of life and who we are as a people. And the fact that it may occur on our watch and occur expeditiously calls us to action. I, you know, I'm living in Greenberg for forty-five years now, and I worked in Mount Vernon for sixteen years, and I saw some deterioration in Mount Vernon. I don't want Greenberg to be Mount Vernon North. And so, and so, you know, God bless Mount Vernon. God bless your struggle. It's a noble struggle. But hey, listen, we may wake up and find out that things have really changed, and not for the better, for the worse. And so I'm here to say, let's fight the good fight. It's a noble fight. It's a good fight. It's a right fight. And let's not stand down. Let's stand up and fight. And let's not stand down, let's stand up and fight.
Again, I want to, uh, thank everyone for attending tonight. And I want to thank our speakers. This issue is, um, if not, it's major and it's not the most urgent issue facing the town of Greenberg. And, um, I think the resident turnout tonight and on Zoom reflects that and the concerns that we have. And because it's such an urgent issue, um, I would be remiss if I didn't thank Senator Andrea Stewart-Cousins for coming down from Albany tonight and, and hearing the voices and sharing her thoughts and uh, Assemblywoman Shimskey and all the other elected officials that are here tonight. I would also, um, like to thank our residents. Our residents that are here tonight, the residents that are watching home on Zoom and the residents that have signed the petitions. Your voice is the voice that we're trying to attach to, to paper. So thank you to all the town residents. And I want to close my remarks with a, a special thank you to Bishop Preston and his congregation for allowing us to meet here tonight and to share his congregation with the community and this hall. And now I'll turn the meeting back over to Dr. Allen, thank you, Dr. Allen.
We had planned to have a question and answer period right now, but I had promised a lot of people that they'd be able to get out by eight o'clock. So I actually, I'm not going to say why we ran over, but we have run over. Um, before we close, I'd like to recognize the last town elected official that has arrived, Ms. Judy Beville. Thank you very much for coming tonight.
I always recognize people.
Yeah. Uh, Mr. Finer, I don't, did you want to briefly say something or no? Okay, okay, thank you. Okay, if anyone has any questions, uh, the members, would everyone who is part of the coalition please stand so that we can, uh, so that you can see the people who've worked so hard to get this movement going? Thank you very much, they've all spent a lot of time and energy. Thank you to all of you who have signed our petitions. If you have not done so yet, we have them at the table in the rear that you can sign before you leave. And we will be available for any questions that you might have. Thank you all for coming in person, thank all of you who have joined us by Zoom. Have a good night.